My mic is on. Good evening, everyone. I am Sarah Johansson and I call to order the Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, March 13th, 2023. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Millyn Sahoney.
President.
Linda Cohen.
Here.
Heidi Kader.
Here.
Bonita Lucky.
Here.
Cheryl Poseen.
Here.
Sheila Pryor.
Here.
Sarah Johansson.
Here.
Chase Anderson.
Here.
All right. Thank you so much. A few quick announcements before we move to the first item on our agenda. The first announcement is, as I indicated earlier, we were, we've been working to try to get our livestream up and running and for some reason, may, maybe it's the leprechauns of St. Patrick's Day coming a little early, we're not sure, but they're not working so well. So this meeting tonight is being recorded as we speak, but it is not being livestreamed. And so, student, if you had someone that was looking to watch it as it was happening, we're terribly sorry, but it will be uploaded on our website tomorrow sometime probably in the morning. So we deeply apologize for that. Second of all, just a reminder that if you're planning to address the school board this evening, it'll come after the student spotlight presentation, which is a few items down the agenda, and you need to fill out a form that looks like this and give it to our assistant Amy, who will make sure that the board gets it and will have you come on up to speak with us a little later. So those announcements aside, the first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted with one motion unless a board member or citizen requests that an item be removed, in which case that item will be removed and considered as a separate item. There's no discussion of consent agenda items and all the consent agenda items are contained in the packet. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda for this evening?
I saw a move.
Second.
Moved by Millyn, seconded by Linda. There's no discussion and it's a roll call vote.
Cheryl Poseen.
Yes.
Millyn Sahoney.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Sheila Pryor.
Yes.
Heidi Kader.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes. All right. We have an agenda and the approval of our consent agenda items. And then the first couple of items on our agenda are reports from organizations and recognition. So first, I know I saw Tanvi. Thanks for coming on up. You can join us at the podium and tell us what's happening at the high school.
All right. So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Tanvi. I'm our student body vice president, so I act as the representative between the high school and the school board. So a couple of things have been happening. First, I'm just going to go through all the clubs and a lot of the impressive things that they've done. The first one is Club Unified. They run the Polar Plunge every year and this year they raised over $1,500. So congrats to them. This year, we recently, we started this thing called Course Ambassador, which is for both eighth graders and people other than seniors, just choosing their courses, deciding which courses they want to do. And it's been super successful. The Course Ambassador has visited the middle schools and they've had a lot of impact in the school, just making sure people know what's happening. NHS had a very successful Snow Days Week, which is theme days that we do in February. They had a successful Winter Idol and Winter Formal. And they also did this thing called Singergrams, which were completely sold out this year, so a lot of money went to charity. Recently, just this past week, DECA had State, which was very successful. They sent, they're sending 50 people to internationals. And also this weekend was BPA, which was also very successful, and they're sending 30 people to nationals. Two weeks ago, the robotics team had their first regional. They ranked third, won excellence in engineering and had the highest scoring robot at the regional, which is, which has been their most successful regional ever. Last week, we had the ACT. It was super successful. All the juniors took the ACT and all the sophomores took a practice ACT. And freshmen participated in an annual respect retreat, which was also successful. We really appreciate, appreciate the school board's commitment to educationally quality for all students, because for some of these students, this ACT is the only time that they can take it. And it really helps their, it really is a game changer in their trajectory towards going towards college and other preparation for experiences outside of high school. Girls' basketball ended their season as section runner-up and boys' basketball are playing in the section championship game tomorrow night at the high school against Hopkins. And spring sports are starting up. We're really just waiting for the snow to melt. All right. Do we have any questions?
All right. Aren't we all waiting for the snow to melt? There is a lot of really fantastic things happening at the high school. Board colleagues, any questions or comments? Heidi?
I have a quick question. You said BPA. What does BPA stand for?
Business Professionals of America.
Any other questions or comments? I just would like to lift up and highlight the Course Ambassador. We heard that when the board was, thank you for allowing the board or welcoming the board at Bagels with the Board a couple of weeks ago. That is, that is certainly a great opportunity for us to have an informal conversation with, with young leaders, and so we appreciate that. And we heard about, you know, some, from some of the high school students wanting to know if there's someone that they can go to to talk about courses. And so clearly, our high school students are busy and for them to add one more thing to help their fellow students or their incoming peers to pick courses is just really important. So thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for having me.
Thanks. And now the next item on our agenda are recognitions, and so I will join Dr. Flansburgh at the podium.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson, and our esteemed guests who are joining us this evening. Our first recognition is actually the 2022, sorry, the 2022 DECA Emerging Leader Honor Award. We would like Pratishtha Praveen Kumar, if you could join us up at the podium. Congratulations. Congratulations to Wayzata High School senior Pratishtha Praveen Kumar, recipient of the 2022 DECA Emerging Leader Honor Award. The award recognizes students studying marketing, finance, hospitality, and management for being academically prepared, community-oriented, professionally responsible, experienced leaders through participation in DECA. DECA is a career and technical student organization composed of more than 150,000 students who are interested in careers in marketing, entrepreneurship, finance, hospitality, or management. DECA enhances the preparation for college and careers by providing co-curricular programs that integrate into classroom instruction, apply learning, connect to business, and promote competition. Congratulations again on this prestigious honor. Well done.
Thank you all so much for the recognition. I've really had a lot of time to develop my leadership skills at Wayzata. I've been a part of many clubs and even gone to develop my own nonprofit organization, Sparkway Learning. Through all the leadership skills that I've learned, and it's been an immense contributor to my success, whether that's learning how to manage people, how to manage finances, or how to manage organization growth. I've learned a lot and I really think that this will help me in my career trajectory, help me progress as an individual, and overall contribute to my success as a person, as a business major. And I'm really looking forward to applying these skills in my career as I go forward. So thank you so much.
Next, we would like to invite Jay Sri Narasimhan to the podium. Is Jay here? Jay, thank you. Come on up. On behalf of the staff at Sunset Hill Elementary, we are excited to recognize Jay Sri Narasimhan as Wayzata Public Schools' March Employee of the Month. Mrs. Jay, as she is affectionately known, has been part of our community for the past 10 years. Her first role at Sunset Hill was our office paraprofessional. She worked for three years there before moving into her current role as the building's administrative professional. Staff refer to Jay as boss because she manages the extremely busy school office with ease, handling a variety of daily tasks, including the coordination of purchase orders, repairing copying machines, collaborating with the district's HR department to find daily substitutes. And outside of the main office, Jay is always happy to help wherever needed. She may be asked to assist with bus duty, help in the cafeteria, or to quickly cover a classroom for a lunch supervisor in transition. Jay treats students and families with extra special care. She takes, she takes new and prospective families on building tours, enjoys reading to children, and has even helped interpret in Tom Eel when needed. Not a day goes by without a student stopping by to say hello or to share a hug with Jay. Her workspace is filled with little gifts, personal notes, and pieces of artwork that students deliver to her desk. One teacher shared, Jay is the heart and soul of Sunset Hill. She always has a welcoming smile for staff and families. Her organization, organization keeps our school running smoothly and her creative problem solving is valued. If a hug is needed, she is available. Some third through fifth grade students shared, Ms. Jay works hard and every time a kid comes late, she helps them. She's always kind and knows everyone by their name. She doesn't quit and is at the top of things and you can count on her. Jay is a valuable asset to our Sunset Hill Elementary team. She is a perfect example of the type of person who should greet staff and visitors in our office, and her perspective and insight has contributed to many positive changes in office routines and practices. She is a wealth of information and has the ability to find answers when people need them. Jay's friendly presence puts people at ease. She listens deeply and is authentic in letting others know they are what is most important. On behalf of the entire Sunset Hill community and Wayzata Public Schools, thank you for all that you do, Jay.
I'm honored. I'm humbled by this honor and the kind words that you just shared. I don't know if I deserve all of it, but I'll take it. It has taken me 10 years to get here, so I'm not leaving this mic anytime soon. I'm going to be here. No, I wouldn't do that to any of you. What is there not to like about my job? I have the best boss in my principal, Ross Williams, and the most wonderful, amazing colleagues who make every day at work a pleasure for me, and I will not have it any other way. Thank you all so much, and I appreciate my colleagues being here for me today. Thank you.
Our final recognition are those who we would like to acknowledge of employees who have announced their retirement for 2022-23. We would like to thank them for their years of service with Wayzata Public Schools and wish them well in their future endeavors, and if they are here, you can kind of stand up and give a wave. I'm not sure if everyone is here. Kathryn Benes, paraprofessional at West Middle School for 21 years of service. Jill Schwent, our controller in the district office for 12 years. And Mary Yates, paraprofessional, Meadow Ridge, 23 years of service. We thank you, and let's give them a round of applause as well. Madam Chair, next is our monthly school spotlight presentation. As you heard earlier, apparently he is the best boss in the district. His students know him as both a ninja gym and a lake surfing expert. The rest of us know Ross Williams as the amazing principal and leader at Sunset Hill Elementary. I'm happy to introduce Principal Williams and his team.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. It is a pleasure to be here to spotlight a program that we've had a chance to be in for about three years now. During that time, it has certainly had some challenges, mainly due to COVID and some of the funding tied to keeping it going, but we persevered and have continued to see it evolve into what it is today. Tonight, I have four fantastic fifth grade teachers with me. Mr. Dan Haldine, Mrs. Lily Metling, Mrs. Jen Schultz, and Mrs. Melissa Murphy. Each of them has offered ways to improve the program each year as we started to realize more and more of the potential for students. I do want to take a moment to specifically thank Mr. Haldine, who first brought this idea to our school a few years ago and has been instrumental in helping coordinate this experience with Minnesota Trout Unlimited, conservation officers, and other outside agencies. Dan has also coordinated with our PTSA for additional funding to keep the program alive and growing, just like the trout they raise each school year. I'd also like to introduce four of our fifth grade students tonight. Kai Fox, just wave. Isabel Meyer, Logan Beecher, and Ayla Nazari Kanamiri. We think you'll appreciate most hearing from the students that are doing the learning and the work. As teachers, we want to ensure that students understand the why behind their learning and that they are able to see and connect ideas, thoughts, and passions to their lives. We think this program gives them another opportunity to do just that and really engage them in the curriculum in different ways. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I'll start with Mr. Haldine.
All right. So we've had the privilege of being able to participate in the Trout in the Classroom program the past three years. Just a brief history of the Trout program. Although the Trout program's been partnering with Minnesota schools for the past 15 years, Sunset Hill, we are in our third season participating. I was introduced to the Trout program five years ago during a continuing, continuing education course at Hamlin University. Presentation was being given. Probably about three minutes into the presentation, I was on my phone filling out the application to be considered. Then it took another two years before we received an email back saying that our school was going to be considered for the program. And I approached Mr. Williams and after a couple conversations of how it would align with standards and the lessons that we teach in the curriculum for fifth grade, it was an easy choice to make that we should participate in this program. The program benefits are many, but what makes this program so appealing besides the 350 class pets that we get are the benefits that it offers our students. Our students get to apply their science lessons, their observational skills, and their learning in real live, real-life situations with our fish. We're also providing all of our students a chance to connect with the natural world in a way that many may have never had the chance to do.
So as a fifth grade team, we work together to make sure that our Trout program, as wonderful as it is on its own, really aligns to our district roadmap and mission. By building cross-curricular connections, we're able to engage each of our learners and develop a sense of shared responsibility, not only for the fish in our rooms, but for the wider natural world. The Trout program directly targets many of our science standards, including understanding how energy moves through ecosystems and the importance of maintaining balance in an ecosystem. Our Web of Life unit through Mystery Science at the beginning of the year leads perfectly into our trout egg arrival in December, and we get to spend the rest of the year extending that learning with the trout in front of us and discovering how we can have a positive impact on the natural world. When we begin our ecosystems conversations, kids tend to think about savanna and far-off rainforests and things like that, because gorillas and lions are more interesting than squirrels we have here. But having the trout in our classrooms really puts Minnesota ecosystems on display and brings the learning that we're doing in our classroom closer to home.
So beyond the obvious, we also have tied this to other, other subjects as well. So students will talk about some of the more exciting things, but we've connected this also to writing. We've talked with all of our specialist teachers to get it even into the tech classroom. So if you take a peek or on the next slide, you're going to see some of the examples from that. You'll also see we gave you some of the art projects as well. So we've worked as a team to show our creative side as well as, along with some of the people from Trout in the Classroom program, in order to really tie this in, not only to the science standards like Jen mentioned, but also some of our other standards as well.
As my colleagues have mentioned, I think the most special part of this program is the meaningful cross-curricular learning opportunities that we're able to put in front of our students. Trout seamlessly lends way to science learning, but I have to shout out my colleagues over the last few years for really finding creative ways to integrate this across all of our core subject areas, in addition to their experiences in the specialist classroom. So a couple of our fifth graders are going to talk about the Trout Stamp Contest, which is kind of an art-integrated activity. And then in technology, with our technology teacher, students created GIFs or GIFs. I know it's a hot debate how to say that word, but I digress, to create GIFs about the life cycle of the trout. In PE, students participate in a game called Oh Trout, where they learn about necessary resources for survival. And then my colleagues will touch a little bit more on the aquaponics piece of the science learning, in addition to reading and writing and more literacy-focused activities as well. So the fifth graders are a lot cuter to listen to than I am, so I'm going to pass it off to one of my students, Logan Beecher, to talk about what it's like to observe these trout as they move through the life cycle.
In December, we got a first look at our trout eggs. Because they were sensitive to light and so small, an iPad was used to share images on a television monitor in the hallway. This gave all students access to the beginning of the program. Many other grade levels kept track of the progress on the TV. Fifth grade especially watched as the eggs became alvein, fry, and currently fingerlings. On March 27th, Trout Unlimited will be onsite to lead us in several activities that we are looking forward to. We will learn the, we will learn about the importance of macro invertebrates and our surface water. We will learn about unique adaptations fish have to survive and thrive. We will play a game about the importance of ecosystems and habitat. We will also get a chance to learn and tie our own flies. We have had opportunities to get hands-on experience with the trout. We began the season by counting the eggs using an image on our iPads. Grouping the eggs into clusters of 10 made the activity easier and more accurate. Using Petri dishes and other science tools, we're able to look more closely at the trout. We sketch mix-up observations and collect data.
So we wanted to give a particular spotlight to Sharon New. She was a student a couple of years ago. One of our writing projects that's more formal for our trout connections is Trout Unlimited will come up with a prompt that kids respond to and they get the option of submitting. So this year, it was something along the lines of a day in the life of a trout. And in our writing curriculum, we really focus on borrowing craft moves from authors. Sharon had recently read a wonderful book, and she borrowed that author's craft moves to sort of start putting you slowly into the position of the trout. And she won second place for that and was featured into the magazine or the newspaper, and we got to get some prizes from Trout Unlimited for that and do some reading of their newspaper as well. It was pretty exciting.
At Sunset Hill, we have an opportunity to showcase our artistic talents and knowledge of trout and their habitat by creating our own trout stamps. Anglers every year purchase trout stamps to support wildlife conservation and protect trout habitat. We created our own version and displayed them for all to see. We are able to use a variety of materials like watercolors, pencils, oil pastels, color pencils, markers, and markers. We have a lot of choice putting our imagination on the paper. For example, this is mine.
Through some great questioning last year, our fifth graders pushed me in the direction of exploring aquaponics. So an extension that we created along with, with their help was starting to grow plants and vegetables on top of the fish tank, with the plants actually growing into the water. The fish provide the fertilizer, the plants keep the chemicals in balance, they keep the water clean, and the kids get a, like directly out of our science unit, they get an example of how the fish and plants live together in this small ecosystem that we have contained in our classroom.
In the spring, we have to say goodbye to our trout. Our special permit within Minnesota DNR requires that they are released by June 15th. We are given permission to release our trout into the Vermillion River near Farmington. In late May, we all take a field trip to Northview Park. You'll be met by volunteers from the Trout in the Classroom program. At the park, we will, we will have the opportunity to learn to fly fish, take a nature hike, study the habitat, and lastly, release our trout. It'll be a bittersweet moment. We are excited to look forward to our end of season field trip. Our times, our time with the trout is at an end, but we know that next December, the cycle starts again for a new group of fifth grade students. We hope that they enjoy the experience as much as we have.
That concludes the Trout in the Classroom for Sunset Hill. I don't know if there are any questions. Hopefully, you can see over the last few years and with the input from students and the creativity really of the teachers behind me, really making it meaningful and engaging and helping kids really understand the impact that they can have on, on their watershed and ecosystem. So I think one of the neat things that we remember talking about is the fact that these are experiences sometimes that we never, never get. So really excited to continue it.
Well, thank you so much, everyone. Stay up here for a minute, because I'm sure my board colleagues will, will have some questions or comments. Dr. Cohen.
First of all, it sounds like an amazing project and congratulations for, for doing it. Second, I just wanted to mention that all three of my kids, quite a long time ago, went K through sixth, and at that point, sixth grade was part of Sunset Hill, at Sunset Hill, and then two grandchildren also were at Sunset Hill. So I have a very warm spot in my heart for Sunset Hill.
Thank you. Dr. Sahoney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a curious, curiosity question. I'm a fish lover. I eat a lot of fish. I never worry about what kind of, you know, what variety it is. I know there's salmon, there is other fish, bass. So of the 300 pets, do you know how, how many varieties there are? Or is, are there, is it just one?
Yeah, all of the fish that were provided are steel-headed trout, and they come from Washington State. Yes. Yeah.
Bonita.
I just want to say I had a chance to take a look at the Trout Stamp Book and the beautiful, absolutely beautiful. So congratulations to that and everyone that created the stamp. I mean, absolutely incredible.
Thank you. We'll pass that along.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments?
I can figure out the microphone. I just wanted to say thank you for being here tonight. It was about 40 years ago I started my career as a biology science teacher in the junior high school level, and also taught high school biology, so this is near and dear to my heart. And having grown up on a farm in northwest Iowa, I've always been a nature lover, and I just really appreciate this type of project, and thank you so much for sharing it with us tonight. Thank you, teacher. Thank you, teachers, and Ross for your leadership. It's greatly appreciated. Go science. I love it.
Other questions or comments? Well, I just want to say thank you, students and teachers and parents for coming out. And I'm going to wish you best of luck in June when you take your trip because if I know my three kiddos at my house, they might be trying to like have a trout that they could have in a tank or do something else. And I know Mr. Holden was telling me a little bit about how the other students in the elementary can walk by your classroom and see that too. So it's really not just a fifth-grade thing, but an everyone thing. And then everyone can look forward to the time that they're fifth graders. So super cool. You might find a board member or two roaming around looking at the trout. We'd love to see it. And maybe another time here about some of those plants, too. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Over and check it out.
Yeah, thanks much. So as we often do, this is a transition point in our meeting. So this concludes our recognitions and our academic stuff. Sometimes this is a chance where people head on out because there's homework and bedtimes and all other kinds of things. We will be moving on to audience opportunity to address the board and then some business things. So you're welcome to stay. But this is also a natural transition time in our meeting. So thank you, students. Take care. We should have gotten a picture.
Right, yeah.
Amy, can we get a picture really fast? Students, can you, are you all still here? Can we quick get a picture? I'm sorry, parents. Students and teachers, that'd be fantastic. Oh, yeah. Did we catch everybody? I think we did. Oh, yeah, in the props. All right, we'll do one more round of applause. Okay, all right. We will now move on to the audience opportunity to address the board. This section of the agenda provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school board. Speakers who wish to provide input to the school board must complete their sign-up sheet, which I think everyone saw, and they're over there if you need to know, and return it to our administrative specialist, Amy, who's sitting at the table to the right. Please note that you will need to complete the request form in order to be included as a speaker. When you are invited to the podium, please identify the subject or agenda items to which your comments pertain. Priority will be given to students and families with students currently enrolled in the district. The school board practices not to engage in discussion or debate with the speaker, but rather to allow the speaker time to express their thoughts. Please present your comments in a respectful and professional manner. Bulgarity references to or inclusion of profanity or derogatory statements will be ruled out of order. Character abuse, specific complaints identifying staff, students, or named individuals in campaigning will also not be permitted. Additionally, the school board chair will act to protect the due process and privacy rights of school district employees and students and will act to limit or discontinue input if such rights are violated. Personnel, student-related, or other matters to which involve data privacy concerns, preliminary allegations, or to which may be potentially libelous or slanderous in nature shall not be considered in public, but shall be processed as determined by the school board in accordance with governing law. Finally, at no time should an audience member approach the board table. If you have information to share with the school board, please leave it with Amy. And anyone approaching the board table will be ruled out of order. This evening, each speaker will be invited to the podium to speak for three minutes. Amy will help us keep track of time by holding up a red card at the three-minute mark. Please enter your comments when you see the red card. In conclusion, I'll repeat that this time is allotted for respectful presentation of ideas and audience comments, and no board discussion or debate will follow the comments. And we have your contact information to be able to follow up with you at the end of the evening. So I think I set him down and flipped him over, so I think I'm going first to serve. I'm trying the best order I can. So I will first invite Courtney to the podium.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Courtney Deveris, and I have a third grader and a kindergartner at Oakwood Elementary. And I have deep concerns and frustrations over the proposed staff ratio changes included in the containment cost document for next school year. Elementary teachers are not just teaching academics. They are nurturing and they are coaching our children. They teach them how to get along and how to include others, how to be strong students and make good choices. They teach them how to apologize, forgive, and grow. They love our students, and they look for ways to help each one of them reach his or her own potential. Increasing class sizes at the elementary level is not beneficial for our teachers or for our young learners. There are several parents who are deeply concerned about how the larger class sizes will impact learning. Collective concerns include more behavior issues, less individualized teaching, less individualized attention, less time for hands-on activities, less physical space for the children in the classroom and more time sitting just at a desk, less time for parent-teacher contact, less time to assist students with those that are behind, and less time to add challenging work for those high-achieving students. And speaking as a daughter of a local retired school teacher elementary, there is definitely major concern over teacher turnover as we do have many fantastic elementary teachers in the Wayzetta district. The mission of the Wayzetta Public Schools is to ensure world-class education that prepares each and every student to thrive today and excel tomorrow in our ever-changing global society. And I don't understand how the proposed changes to the staff ratio support the district's mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Susan.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Susan Stevens, and I'm here tonight to express my concerns over the staff ratio changes that are included in the cost containment document for the 2023 to 2024 school year. We have four children in the Wayzetta School District. Our youngest child is in 3rd grade at Oakwood Elementary School, and there are 21 kids in his classroom. Currently, our entire 3rd grade is made up of 65 students and three teachers. If these staff ratios take effect, he could have 32 kids in one classroom next year in 4th grade. That's an over 50% increase. How can we expect one teacher to manage a 50% increase in classroom size? How can we expect one teacher to manage the unique needs of 32 different kids effectively? This doesn't seem fair to the teachers or the students. The Wayzetta School District website states 21 to 27 children per classroom is appropriately staffed, with a goal of 24 students per classroom. Could we look at other places to cut rather than shutting down classrooms, eliminating teachers, and putting students into overcrowded classrooms? Wayzetta has over 1,600 employees, yet they're choosing to cut 27 teachers, including 14 elementary classroom teachers, eliminate classrooms, and increase class sizes, all the things that will have the most impact on our students. While we understand the need for cost reductions, we don't understand or support reducing teachers or classrooms. The mission of Wayzetta Public Schools is to ensure a world-class education that prepares each and every student to thrive today and excel tomorrow in an ever-changing global society. These staff ratios will work directly against this mission, and our kids deserve better. They are counting on us to get this right. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Colin.
Hello, I'm Colin Comis, and I live and work in the district here. And I would also support some of my fellow community members, too, with the staff reductions and the big concern there. I think, too, the big, some of the discussions that we've had at home and in the community have revolved around the funding shortage. And I guess I'm a little bit shocked and looking for other solutions other than cutting staff and cutting teachers. And if that's, I know about biology, but I don't know a whole lot about finance, but I would love to see some other solutions, whether it's from bonding or from a referendum. I think the community 100% supports this district. And if we ask for their help, they will help us. I don't know if we could also reach out to private fundraising or any other type of corporate fundraising, too, to help support our mission to really help all kids. So I would love to talk more about that. And if anybody wants to reach out, that would be great. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Jackie.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Jackie Kaplan. I'm a parent of two young elementary school kids at Oakwood. I have a kindergartner and a third grader. I am concerned about the impact of larger class size on learning for all of these children and the decision that we recently found out about via email. This age group has also not had a normative education experience due to the pandemic. My third grader was in kindergarten when all of this started, and so we've had a lot of distance learning. And I think that that's also impacted behavior in the classroom and ability to be regulated, all of that. I'm also a child psychologist. And as a psychologist, I'm concerned about sensory overload with more children in the classroom, greater challenges for teachers with managing challenging behaviors as they arise. This would take away from the ability for all of the children to learn. It would also lead to increased teacher burnout. It could lead teachers to choose to leave the district for less stressful jobs. It could also lead to more families choosing to leave the district and enroll their children in smaller learning environments. This would decrease enrollment and therefore decrease funding. I'm hoping a final decision has not yet been made on this matter and that the class size is still up for negotiation. Thank you.
Next is Carrie.
Hi, thank you so much for having all of us here and chatting. My name is Carrie Kenley. I have two boys who go to Oakwood Elementary. One is in 2nd grade, the other's in 5th grade. And I, too, just like all these other parents, am quite concerned about this possibility or decision to have higher populations in the classrooms. My kiddo, who's going into 3rd grade next year, simply would not be able to handle that. He struggles as it is just to get his life together, if you will. So I think having even that many more kids in the classroom and an overwhelmed teacher, I'm assuming the teacher would be overwhelmed by having that many kids in the classroom, would just be quite unbearable for him. I love this community. I love this district. My family and I moved here from the Washington DC area almost 10 years ago because I went to Wayzetta, and we wanted to have a smaller kind of community and better opportunities for our kids. Not that DC isn't great. It is, but it's just so much. And so this came as a blow to learn that we could have these huge classrooms for our kids. So, and I really do worry about the teachers big time. They deserve more. They deserve a lot more. They need to have more staff in the classroom with them and also more support systems. And I don't know what their salary is, but I'd imagine higher salaries, especially if they are going to be taking on more kids. And we don't want to lose these people. They're assets to our community. And I just really, really worried about them. The teachers at Oakwood for my kids have been just outstanding, and they have turned my kids' lives around, and they are so supportive and communicative. And I would just hate to see any of them have to leave. So thank you for your time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, Michelle.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michelle Trent, and I'm a parent with two kids at Oakwood, one that's in 3rd grade and one that's in kindergarten. And I'm here to discuss the reduction in the number of classes next year, increasing the class sizes to over 30, which is a very large class. So I want to talk a little bit about the overcrowding. Overcrowding has a direct effect on the individualized focus of each student. Teachers are to evaluate students' learning, check for weaknesses and strengths, and ideally prescribe the proper regimen to achieve optimal educational health. However, it typically does not happen or work like that in an overcrowded classroom. Teachers are not able to spend the same amount of time with each student. If a student is struggling, there's not enough time to help them because there are too many other students to manage. Also, due to a large classroom size, a teacher may not notice a student who might be struggling or may have a quieter voice and may not be expressing themselves or may not have the time to help them as needed. It's a fact that when there are more people in a classroom, there are more people to deal with, which in turn creates more distractions, more levels of intelligence, more everything. These issues can lead to a slower pace or the opposite, which is too fast of a pace for some, which will affect the learning process. Overcrowded classrooms also have a unavoidable noise issue. I can't imagine over 30 kids in 4th grade altogether and having a ball, but I can't imagine trying to teach those kids. With all the students, the noise level naturally increases. With littler classrooms, it becomes harder for students to concentrate and harder for teachers to teach. When teachers have to fight over noise to teach, much of the lesson is lost because of how much time is wasted. Every child has the right to the attention and support they need, which is difficult to attain under all circumstances. Once the class size passes a certain point, the teachers are bound to fail because the demands of their time cannot be met. If the teachers fail, then the children fail, which has a direct effect on the child, the family, and also the Wayzetta community. Myself, and I'm sure as you are also hearing from other parents tonight, we simply want our kids to get what all children deserve, which is a great education and a shot at success. So thank you.
Okay. And now the last paper I have this evening is from Rick.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the school board today. I, too, am addressing the proposed cost containment measures and the implications on teacher-student ratios in elementary schools. My name is Rick Knightley. My wife, Jenny, and I have two children, a 2nd and 4th grader at Oakwood Elementary School and a younger child who will be of kindergarten age beginning in the fall of 2024. Our elementary students and their teachers have been dealt a terrible hand over the past few years. The implications of COVID on this younger group of elementary students and their teachers cannot be understated. The proposed cost containment adjustments to the budget include an FTE reduction of 14 full-time elementary school teachers, over half of the total proposed teacher FTE reduction of 27. So to call this out again, the budgeted plan will cut out 14 elementary classrooms. I do not have the details for all elementary schools, but for Oakwood, the cut will result in removing an entire 3rd and 4th grade classroom based on an assumption that the current number of students in 2nd and 3rd grade move on to the next grades at Oakwood. This would result in classroom sizes of 32 and 33. This compares to the stated target class size of 24 with a range of 21 and 27. 30-plus elementary students in a single classroom is far too many for our kids to obtain the proper guidance, care, and instruction that they all should be afforded and will create a very disengaging environment for teachers that want nothing more than to provide all of this for their students and children. I ask that the school board challenges the Cost Containment Committee to revisit their plans for the budget and find other creative solutions with a focus on ensuring that Wayzetta Public Schools achieves its mission to ensure a world-class education that prepares each and every student to thrive- and every student to thrive today and excel tomorrow in an ever-changing global society. I don't see how increasing elementary class sizes, in some cases above 30 elementary students in a single classroom, enables sustainable achievement of that critical mission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight to address the school board and thank you for those that joined them with support. I just, I will clarify, the school board approves a budget in June, or we have to approve a budget in June before our fiscal year starts in July. And a lot of our budget decisions will happen based on what we find out from our legislators in St. Paul and how much they invest in public education. So, keep that in mind in your communications. So, thank you all. And we continue, the board shares your, your commitment to our strategic roadmap and all four of those which are academic achievement, each and every personalization, and student health and well-being. And we will continue to pay attention to that mission. So, thank you. Okay. Now to, hearing no other audience comments? No. Okay. We will move on to some of the business of the board. The first being just a monthly financial update from DeeDee Kering, our Executive Director of Finance and Business.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson. Tonight I'll be reviewing the monthly report for the month ending January 31st, 2023. The information that was provided to you in your board packet also includes a revised budget that you approved at the last month. So this analysis reflects revenue received in the month and noted above. Property tax revenues are close in line with prior years along with state aids. As pointed out in prior reporting months, deviations in revenue from prior years include federal aids and miscellaneous local income. The significant increase over the prior years in federal continues to be the fact that CARES Act dollars, or those dollars due to the pandemic, continue to flow into the district in fiscal year '22, '23, with these dollars being allowed to carry over to multiple future years. This has allowed the district to draw on these funds periodically through the, throughout the year for its intended purposes. A portion of the variation in miscellaneous local revenue from prior years includes an insurance recovery of almost $300,000. That pushes the comparative percentage upwards from the prior fiscal year during the same timeframe. The district also continues to see numbers more in line with pre-pandemic times as it relates to the district collecting for sports and would also be a similar story for community education levels for the before and after care programs related to school childcare. Next, onto the statement of expenditures. As you can see from the statement of expenditures that was provided to you, the overall expenses are similar in prior years, especially as it relates to salaries and benefits combined, factoring in the revised budget that I mentioned. As mentioned in prior reporting months, supplies and materials along with other expenses can vary from year to year based on the timing of purchases or payments during the fiscal year, depending on the needs of the staff, buildings, and departments. That's all for my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you so much. Board colleagues, there's no required action, but I'm wondering if there are any comments or questions.
May I make one more comment? I forgot to say at the beginning, this was reviewed with the Finance Committee of the Board last week as well.
Right.
And does on a monthly basis. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the next thing that I was going to say is I know that our Finance Committee does review this information with the Finance Team on a monthly basis. We seek some input too from our Citizens Financial Advisory Council and we are watching closely. I just would like to just ask a question again because I think we're seeing this, DeeDee. You talked about some CARES funds and, and we heard a lot in the last few years about the investments that the federal government has made in education through some of that pandemic relief. And can you remind me again how much of that pandemic relief that we've gotten from the federal government can go towards our general fund or the things that we're going to be, that we want to do every day?
Sure, Madam Chair. Thank you for your question. The district has received from 2020, in July of 2020, when we first received our pandemic funding, through September of '24, we will have some funding. It's over that whole time period, $11.7 million. It's about 1.7% of our total budget over that four-year period. And almost all of that funding is, was for specific purposes and had to be spent in a specific manner. So there was only about $250,000 that we could apply to the loss of enrollment that we saw during the pandemic. So very, very little of that was new money to help offset the times that we were having with the difficulties of the pandemic. Other school districts did receive a lot more money than we did in Wayzetta, and that it's due to the fact that most of the funding was received based on our student population need, which is based on the free and reduced lunch counts for our school district. So, yes, we did get some funding, not enough to help with any budget woes that we might have within the school district.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks, DeeDee, for the report. I just wanted to share a little bit, I know we've had some inputs about cost containment and there's a lot of really helpful information on our website, including contact information for our legislators. And I just wanted to encourage those in attendance tonight and those who may choose to listen to our presentation once it's online tomorrow. I know it's not being livestreamed tonight, but it's really going to be important. Our school board members have been engaging with legislators. I've been engaging directly with legislators and we really rely on them to help make, or to make the good decisions for funding for schools. Typically, over the past several years, we've found ways to make ends meet with the 2% increase on the funding formula. I don't know how many stores individuals may have been visiting lately where there's only been a 2% increase in products and services over the last two, three years. It wouldn't be very many, but that's been what we've been locked into. And many of our costs associated with running a school district have increased by well beyond 2%, including 13% to our transportation budget this year. In general, inflationary pressures are 5% to 8%. So, we're going to continue working with our legislators. We feel that they've been very responsive. They have indicated to us that they've been hearing from a lot of parents within the Wayzetta community. So if you've not yet added your name to that list, for those in attendance or listening, I would encourage you to do that because it's really going to be important. They'll be doing a lot of really focused work on creating the finance funding packages in the coming two to three months. I think by law, they have to finish their work by May 22nd. And we operate under what would be considered probably a very poor business model in that we really have no control over our revenues. We can't increase the price of our products and services. We really can only engage in cost containment and find ways to manage through expenditures. So, it's a really challenging business model for us. I do believe that we are very efficient and we work hard to be effective with the resources that are allocated to our school districts. But it is a real challenge when we have so little control over the revenues that come into us. The challenges and the financial impact of the pandemic are real and we've, we've taken a heavy hit as a result of the path that we've navigated in the last three years through, back in the 2021 school year when there were a number of students that didn't materialize within the district, or 200 students approximately left the district and we did not experience growth that year. So that was a real challenging situation for us. And for growing school districts, that particular year was a tremendous challenge because the planning has to happen well in advance before the game plan, the state's plan for mitigation strategies that came out in the end of July didn't give us a whole lot of time to be responsive to, to make good decisions with that. So, I don't want to sound like I'm up here just complaining and whining about everything. We're appreciative of the support that we have from our state. We tremendously appreciate the support from our parents. We want for this school district to serve your needs well, your kids' needs well. We want you to be proud of us and we work really hard at it. And there have just been a lot of really strong challenges in the past several years, much of which have been beyond our control that we're going to continue to work really hard with. So, I just wanted to share that bit of oversight. I just made, you know, read, read that off my mind off the cuff. So I don't know how it sounded actually. I'll listen to it tomorrow when it comes out. But I think that's grounded in the fact and reality of what we've been working with. We are making the rounds to communicate with our staffs and making sure that they're in the loop and that they're equipped with facts as well. And we met with our liaison group, which is the group of district parent leaders representing PTA's from all of our schools here a few days back. And, and we find that group to be really helpful. You could feel free to reach out to them if you might happen to have any questions about anything. So, anyway, I've probably taken enough time, but I just wanted to share a little bit. I wanted to thank you for being here tonight. We don't take lightly the support that our parents dole out to us and we don't take educating your children lightly. I just want to assure you that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Okay. The next item on our agenda is related to Human Resource Services and our summer programming with TNTP. And I will turn it over to Stacy Voss, our Executive Director of Human Resources.
Sorry for all the technology glitches this evening. I have just a quick item for you this evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. It's a recommendation that the board approve the memorandum of understanding that we have in collaboration with TNTP. And it's in regards to our partnership for the 2023 Camp Explorer Summer Learning Program.
All right. Board colleagues, it is recommended that the board approve the, this memorandum agreement supporting the TNTP, the Teach Minnesota Partnership for the 2023 Camp Explorer Summer Learning Program. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Benita and seconded by Cheryl. Is there any discussion?
Just for our audience, someone, could, could you give what the TNTP stands for?
It's the Teaching New Teachers Program. And it's a collaboration that we have with that organization. And it's actually for non-traditional teachers. So it's really a program that encourages people who aren't following the more traditional path into teaching to have the opportunity to pursue and opportunity to obtain a licensure as a teacher. And so they utilize our summer school, the Camp Explorer Elementary Program, because they're only licensed by the state to, for teachers to earn licensure in the elementary levels and then special education. So we are partnering with them and they are utilizing our Camp Explorer program to earn those, that licensure towards their teaching license. So it's a great opportunity for us to have a bunch of bright, eager teachers to come in and work with our students. And it's an advantage to them because they get their student teaching done during that six-week summer program.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Stacy, can you remind how our teachers, just so we're not having just student teachers teaching in our Camp Explorer program, can you say a little bit more about how then the Wayzetta teachers work with these teachers over the summer?
So it is specifically the TNTP fellows that are in the classroom. We will have two fellows in each classroom. And then our teachers provide support to them in the roles of a student support specialist and the role as the overall coordinator of the position. We have EL support and we have outside support. There's also mentorship. And then of course, in order to earn the license, just as we do with any teachers, there's that evaluation process where they are closely monitored and their advisors, their mentors give them feedback in regards to the progress that they're making towards that licensure.
Okay. Thank you.
So they get lots of support.
Great. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, it's a roll call vote.
Bonita Lucky?
Oh, no. I'm sorry. We need to move. Is there, is there a motion to, no, we moved and seconded. It's a roll call vote. I am so sorry. We're good. Okay.
Bonita Lucky? Yes. Cheryl Poseen?
Yes.
Melan Sahoney?
Madam Chair, one of my family members works for TNTP and therefore to avoid any semblance of conflict of interest, I would like to recuse in any matter related to TNTP.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Sheila Pryor?
Yes.
Heidi Kader?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you much. The next item on our agenda is under other board action and it's related to our superintendent contract. And I will read something. "The School Board Committee and the Superintendent Evaluation and Compensation recommends approval of the attached superintendent contracts for services July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. The proposed contract was reviewed by legal counsel on behalf of the Board of Education. Notable information about this contract includes the following. Given the uncertainty of school funding for the 2023-2024 school year and the current cost containment measures underway to prepare a 2023-2024 Wayzetta Public Schools budget, Superintendent Anderson recommended to the school board chair and vice chair that they prepare a one-year contract to extend the current contract which expires on June 30th, 2023. This one-year extension is in lieu of a more traditional three-year contract often written for school superintendents. The annual salary for 2023-2024 school year reflects a 0% increase when compared to the superintendent's contracted salary for the 2022-2023 school year. Minor revisions were made to the family emergency leave provisions. Clarification to the language was made for the section titled 'Continuing of Contribution Toward Health Insurance Upon Termination of Employment.' And the benefits outlined in the contract are structured the same as those for 2022-2023 school year. The recommended action is to approve the contract for services for the superintendent of schools for July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024 contract year and to authorize the school board chair and clerk to sign the document on behalf of the Board of Education. Is there a motion to that effect?"
So moved. Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Dr. Cohen.
Well, considering the cost containment that we're going through, I think it's, it's a very generous and appropriate offer for Dr. Anderson's contract.
I too would just like to thank the committees that worked with Dr. Anderson and just express a token of thanks to Dr. Anderson. Clearly, the commitment that you have to our district isn't just professional, but it's personal too. And this contract reflects that. We appreciate your prudence as, as we navigate this time and we look forward to talking to you again in, in a, in a year when hopefully things are looking a lot better. So, thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded and it's a roll call vote.
Sheila Pryor?
Yes.
Heidi Kader?
Yes.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Cheryl Poseen?
Yes.
Melan Sahoney?
Yes.
Linda Cohen?
Yes.
Sarah Johansson?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Board reports. Any board reports?
I will just give a thanks to Dr. Sahoney and Cheryl Poseen, who joined a lot of our professionals and colleagues at the Association of Metropolitan School Districts Day at the Capitol, which is the first of many days at the Capitol. I think it was a snowy morning that you commuted to St. Paul and spent a whole day visiting our entire Wayzetta delegation with others. And so now I see that Dr. Sahoney would like to say something.
I don't know if I heard you mention Heidi.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Heidi attended too. I am thinking of, I'm so sorry, Heidi. Heidi attended as well. The three of you went, I know you had a packed schedule of meetings. We have, what, eight or nine? I mean, we have a number of members and, and then there were presentations from different House committees and things. So, thank you for your advocacy. I think you're going back in a couple weeks for the School Boards Association Day at the Capitol and that doesn't even count the work that you're doing on a, on a weekly basis. So, thank you for that.
The other board reports. Hearing none, that concludes our agenda, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Benita, seconded by Melan and Linda. All in favor of adjourning our meeting this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. The Wayzetta Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, March 13th, 2023, is adjourned.